...
Yeah. But I remember, when y'all met him, they called him in their house. No, I understand, I understand. But that was, that was... I don't think you want to have, not in the past. I promise you. Do you want, do you want to go with finding zoning or? Well, that is an order. That's what she said. It's a zoning order.
I'm calling the meeting for the ordinances to order. And it's just discussion only, no decisions, nothing, just discussion. Okay.
That's probably your call, but I might have to hold on to it because I'm going to be meeting.
Okay. We're going to go with the ordinances and what's the first one? So we started on this one here. The next one, but this one here. I guess, uh, Chapter Two, because Chapter Two was never written up to where it was passed.
Well, but, but that's only specific one. That's only specific one, wasn't...
No, actually, we said it in the ordinance. So if, uh, if you want to go back, that's what we said, we'd go back over it and see if there's anything you want changed because it was not written out.
So we only talked about it, or y'all?
Well, actually, it passed.
The only thing that was changed was that conference vote.
That's it.
Well, actually, we...
Y'all, okay, y'all discussed it in a workshop, y'all discussed that entire ordinance during a workshop. But the only thing that was ever actually changed during the city council meeting was the votes. So, so that entire chapter has not been rewritten or voted on.
Well, how are we going to, uh, this is my mind thing. I mean, none of them said, "We show it and..." So, uh, that's what I was curious about, how are we going to get this, uh, and we take it?
Right.
I guess we'll start with, uh, Section two point one five oh six, holding animal in shelter.
One five oh six?
Yeah. Well, they used to have a shelter here.
We understand, but we don't have an ordinance here.
Oh, you don't? I'm sorry. Well, this is two dash three.
Section two doesn't really... Two ten, the last one they had was two thousand nine hundred five zero three.
Do you have a two dash three anywhere else?
Two dash three, yes, yes. They have nation.
All right, then I guess we'll start at two, uh, on the paper, two dash three. No, two dash thirteen is...
Two dot one five oh six, two dash thirteen. For some reason, your total contents.
Okay, so I, I guess we're going to start with two point two oh one, permit required. It's on log two dash three. It says here that, uh, I guess y'all can read it, but I'll read it out loud so that audience knows. It says, "No person shall, shall without perceiving a permit there for enwriting from the city clerk on keep harbor or have custody of any animal over three months of age, except that in the section shall not apply to the keeping of a small cage bird or aquatic amphibian animal solely as pets." So, um, then we go to the two point two oh two, which is permit regulations, which, uh, we used to have permits in. And, uh, I don't know why they didn't play with it, but the city clerk shall... Gosh, I don't have it, please. Hi, I'm a big promulgating regulations. Uh, regulations govern the issuance of permits and such regulations shall include requirements for humane care of the owner's animal and for compliance with all provisions of the article and other applicable statutes and ordinances. The city clerk may amend such regulations from time to time as they need and desirable for the public health and welfare, welfare to protect the animal from cruelty.
So, uh, we not need to go back to the permit requirements? I mean, is that still enforced?
Uh, no, we, uh, somehow, no, but they quit, they quit doing permits.
But this is, they do.
Right, so we can start towards that.
That's what it says. That's the what?
Which one are you talking about? Well, you can't just say that, you have the, the...
Yeah, no.
No, I'm just saying, she can't say.
No, yeah, but...
It's a conversation.
Yeah, you're just saying you would like to keep that. To, to keep this and enforce it, then it has to go to the agenda and say, hey, well, it shouldn't have to go to the agenda.
You're not going to strike it or change anything.
You don't have to do anything, it's, it's there.
But there, uh, part of this is that the city would issue a license tag too. And, uh, I don't know what the cost of it was, if you had it.
I think that was discussed in that.
Two dash four, this was discussed before.
Yeah.
Five dollars? It just says, uh, tags show, uh, proof of rabies. For some reason, they don't, they leave it in the city barn, which we don't have.
Yeah.
So, anyway, that's what that adds up to. So I guess what we need to do is put in there that, uh, all of this stuff, uh, animal per- permits, two point two hundred, uh, to keep. Okay. Article two point three hundred, relative to animals. We have in there, uh, for people that's not taking care of their animals or besome, underbesome, uh, anything that, you know, is not nice to an animal. And then noisy animals, stray animals. I wish there was something we could do about that, but I don't know what we could do, really.
We don't have...
Well, of course, because you don't have anybody to go out.
That's the whole thing. And then if you do the tags and the licensing and all that, you're going to have to provide all that stuff. I mean, that's going to have to do for just, then someone's going to have to take care of that. I'm not saying to have it, yeah.
Because I'm...
Saying that, that is part of it.
Of course. And, uh, let's see. Just, uh, two eight, two point eight hundred is housing, keep, keeping of certain animals. I don't know if y'all want to keep that, it has to do with, uh, chickens and...
This is one of those areas where we're in conflict with state law. The state law says, you have to... Roosters are half on.
Can't hear you rustle, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a, there's a state law that went into effect a few years ago that said that municipalities cannot prevent residents from having a certain number of pets. That roosters are, are accepted from that, but this is just an example of...
How many animals?
I don't recall.
Chickens?
Not chickens, animals. Yeah, but how many?
Two pets.
Animals, not chickens.
Well, that's why this one...
Chicken house.
This is the chicken section.
Okay, but we have to, well, the state law, we can't, at this point in time, we can't say they can only have two. If state law says they can have six.
Well, I'm not saying either.
No, I'm just, again, we're, we have ordinance here.
Do you want to do the ordinance?
Absolutely not. I'm, I'm just trying to...
I thought we were having a conversation here about...
That, you know, if we've got something in writing right here, we either need to discuss changing it, or whatever, I mean, that's what we're here for.
We need to discuss it section by section, so just looking through here and say, yeah, we'll keep it.
Well, we're in this one right here with the chickens.
It was like the first one, we didn't discuss it or anything, we just said, we're keeping the safety of two, one oh.
Can I make a suggestion? Let's find out what the crossing on the permitting will be, and then back with the minimum till, we're going to decide if we want to add it. If you want to keep it the way it is, or if you want to come back and change it, you know, with dates and change it to one point four dollars and stuff.
So we don't want to make no ordinance if the fees are taken. Um, we're not making anything tonight, we're just discussing. I know, you said you wanted to keep this without even, because someone else said they wanted to keep it, I said, so you want to keep it, is what I said. So, you know, because at this time, yes, the fees only five dollars, we just, we ordered the, if we, it counts as a side to keep it.
And it's each individual permit is ten dollars, we're going to have to go back and change that portion.
Well, I don't really think there's a price in this.
And in some instances now, what you'll see is a table of fees associated with certain elements in the code.
It's in the back, under Appendix A, of fees.
So that's something we can, maybe the ordinance as is, the main container model, we schedule, give it back.
It's currently, it says, "Animal permit fees for each male dog or spayed dog is three dollars, male cat, spayed cat is only a dollar, for unneuter, it's twenty-five, for dogs, fifteen for cats." That's what the ordinance book says. So it wasn't even the five dollars, it's dependent upon if they're fixed or not, cat, dog, whatever.
This does, yes, I want to go, so.
See, this says, "Animal permit fees," we come back here, "Dog watching fee is five dollars."
What, uh, what was that, two point nine or what?
Under the Appendix A, under fees.
Okay, six, three.
So these, these fees are basically completely one another, this way I'm reading them.
There's so many of these things, you know, they're definitely, area underneath that says, "This was adopted on that inch," but it just can't be...
Yes, they are. My, I'm going to just make the assumption that this book was all done in the time that adopted that.
Yeah, I don't think so, but this is, like, a male dog, the state law is three dollars, and here, it says fees are five dollars for each dog. And it conflicts each other.
And that name has been one that stopped, tried to injure citizens here in fact, I don't know. Or that, or the place, the enforcement at that time was the police department, the police department.
I'm similar, is this to the way of the advantage of the paid waterways? They have it. I mean, obviously, a document, a patient, it talks about the water department, but we say the water department, but on a community basis or a real basis, we got paid the rates. They come from...
That came from Hilltop Security, which is what takes our development board, but just how we should increase our rate of years to pay back that one.
Well, I mean, per my procedural, is there any reason why we couldn't treat fees, the fees associated with animal permits, where you're saying, here's the, here's the ordinance.
It's paid, it conflicts with it.
What do y'all want to do?
I mean, you, you've got conflicting fees here. So, I mean, somewhere we need to come to a solution, say, hey, you know, is it going to be three dollars, is it going to be, find the amount that it's going to cost, and then, you know, come to a price. And here, we've got one's three dollars, and one's five dollars, and one's one dollar. Those need to go away if you're going to say, hey, it's going to be five dollars.
But you're really not wasting your time doing it at all, because you don't have any of the pressure.
What else?
Can I make notes of this?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I know it's been discussed in the past, of, you know, Franklin legal and meeting her both have purchased us about redoing, re-quantifying our entire book. And I know that in the past, it was brought up that we could do this, because we had the common sense, et cetera, et cetera. Um, which is correct, and that we don't want outsiders doing our ordinances. But what they do is they take these current ordinances and they find these redundancies, they find these errors, and they fix it for us. And then they, it comes to the council before any, for approval, correct, and they work along the side of all. Yes, it's a little bit more upfront.
Up to date?
Very much up to date.
There you go.
But Franklin also costs six thousand.
For the first year. That would need to be worked into extra budgets for what we're making.
Well, we also have a budget surplus on Capitol Hill, this issue for the...
Correct. And they're very willing to work, they do a lot of, they do a lot of things, large and small. Because there's so many, as I said, redundancies or errors, having professionals get it would really be in the best way.
Oh, that's the Texas Mills Reed's position, and that will, but to more than one time, they say, confident they will, they bias.
So if we, if it gets rewritten by anybody here, it has to go to our attorney. The cost alone will be more than six thousand dollars. Our subdivision ordinance, for instance, the way it stands right now, I don't know if there's anything wrong with it. He quoted it as almost twenty thousand dollars just to figure out. Just the one subdivision ordinance. So, that's...
Compliance, compliance is a huge, you know, it's really complicated, and we're trying to match a municipal code that's set up. And all you, you just need one thing, it's out of alignment, to one way, and then board. I mean, we don't provide those, you know, kind of, because they just, they found that one thing, and the next thing they know, we're pulling documents and, and notes and trying to figure it out.
Dial line, I have to pick from all the ways to recover the, the city of the city across a lot, that I've operated, which one, y'all doing that?
Well, if we return it on the line, we can...
I'm sorry.
I don't know which way, say which way, so it, it didn't go.
It's just when you turn your hand, you're right on the line.
I mean, we could, we could go through this whole thing, and then have ten changes. I would, it would be nice if everybody had a current copy of the same document, that we could review and advance the meeting. And then we could each say, hey, there's something in this section that I haven't found, I have to pick this one up. And then we can focus on those areas where we think there's correct to go through, right?
Actually, that's sort of what we thought about, is each one of, pick out the one you wanted to, and... Can you hear us? And that way, uh, I think you're saying well, but if you're not mistaken, well, altogether. So, what, plus your second one? I'm first of all, we got the copy of all the kind of more focused ones. Although we were each one person, with the one they were interested in, and but we're going to do all of them, because one person...
But each one, but each person is going to look at, will say, I take number one, I'm going to look at, everything looks good. But each one, look at number one, right, I don't think it looks good, I think this, from this one to this one, need changes.
Well, that's when it would come back to, like you, regimen, and then what the rest?
She wouldn't have it.
Yeah, I think even, even if one person's going to take responsibility for presenting a section, everybody needs to review it and have, there's at least a time of speaking, knowledge, right, of what we're doing.
So...
Does the copier have sustainability on it? Like, time visual copy of the most recent, if they can, if they have that.
Turn having, it's already on the left side. But it's not going to, we're cutting it more.
Okay, that's what... Because all, all of it, on the, on the, on the side, concerning the sections, all of the ordinances on the right side.
Yes, they are.
So then, as long as there, as long as everything that's on the right side is, kind of, like, that's good.
Well, we don't know, Ben.
If it's, if it's all in there, and we can get thumb grabs, then that would be easier to download.
Um, I have Dropbox, I have a professional one in Dropbox, if you want, I can create a council folder, and just download all that stuff on that one location, and send it by the message to my address. So it can come back.
Personally, I would probably don't, don't grab from me, because I, should I take it off of your... Personally, I would probably don't, don't grab from me, because I, should I take it off of your. I mean, it's still, it would still be there.
And you could take it off that side and put it on thumb grab.
Right. And then you can download it on your computer, and you can highlight it, put it over there, like a term view or whatever, and everybody can still have the problem. That's just.
Is the, is the charter available on my, is the charter available on my.
Uh, like, it's, it's pretty delicate, and it's not. It's not as detailed as probably what we're wanting, because it really just has our big file on it.
Pat.
Are the, are the, the documents that you have there, are they the same as what's on the website now? All the ordinances are, are written?
Uh, that's one of the questions. Probably, probably for the most part, but not everything.
That's what we were discussing, if it was the same.
I mean, this book here versus that book there, it's got some pages that are, that are missing.
What's online is, what's from this book, this is the one that's six, six, seven, three, that's what has been four.
So you said that federal contents was not on today on the one that we have?
Yeah.
Is there, you're giving the contents, they're not on the one they're giving, okay. So we just need to make sure that the one online is, matches what it was.
Yes, that's the first.
I think it'd be pretty easy, I mean, if you just have your website on it, and it's all of it, and it's, and we believe that virtual, for a version, we have just like a little, yeah, and then it's like the same, but it's in the, the chapter, yeah, that's the page that we're writing, but.
I want to have that, they did, it's kept, it was being some comments. Just to get up on the, the lines, just, so everything had to be up on the sections to, to.
When you say section, do you mean, I like this, four, eight, two, nine?
So. This point, what do you do? What are y'all, how are y'all wanting these to be? Via. Watch out for Dropbox.
I'll send you a link to that folder, I can just start, whatever you need to do, and add, just a good note, a good narrative on the flat drive, and I'll send.
Outside voice, Russell, we can't hear you.
Outside voice, we're going to create a Dropbox folder with the documents in it, so that everybody can access the identical copies that we're talking about that are in Dana's folder. Did you catch the part where the version Greg and I are looking at is different from the version of Dana's book? So that's the reason we're trying to homologate.
Okay.
Why are they different? Because this is the book that's been kept with the city secretary desk, so anytime that he can do it's out and it's put in here. They will not keep it up with the other books, okay, or at least not all the books. Some of the books do have them. But Franklin Legal, yeah, that's why we're trying to push them, because they will maintain that.
It also creates conversation, it creates an online presence, it creates an online presence for the city, from an ordinance standpoint, that can be searched. I guess I understand you search, but it's on PDF documents all the time. I've got a couple of examples, and it's kind of, it's, it's, those are, flat-based ordinance management systems, just makes the bodies during the share information, or transparency system, that's what I'm, everybody likes.
And really, the city ordinance is, can you, in a search form, or a search form, on our, on our website, or?
So you could, if it were an HT, it could, if it were a web document, but these are individual PDF documents. So you have to aggregate all those, put those in scans, copies of the pages, which means, and then, go through a process to convert it, and then, have somebody audit it to make sure that the character recognition is all right, we could make sure.
Also, like you said, the online version is, should be as today's correct. But I looked yesterday, and I found that there are some minutes mixed in there. And that was confusing to me, I didn't know why. And to the ordinances. I had.
No, it could be. Because that's how, you know, whatever it was, that's how we have it pulled in safely.
But I mean, I didn't understand why there would be minutes mixed in with the ordinances. I mean, maybe there's re, I don't know.
Depending on what it is, like, for instance, this one right here, is a bit of thing from, from 2020, uh, where they closed a street. And so that one, you, the deed, the deed without warranty, and there's the mix and bounce description.
So there are ordinance, there are minutes included in some of the ordinance.
Right, because, and like this one right here, these are all the people who petitioned, signed the petition. That way, you can guide, that way, if somebody tries to ever question it, you know? That way, they can come back and say, everything's there, it's really just kind of like a radio zone.
Okay, so the minutes that are, they are associated with.
That particular ordinance, correct, yeah, for whatever reason.
Would, you know, that, that, um, that six thousand dollars, would they make it so it's friendly user to you on the, on the computer? I'm just asking.
Yes, it is, it's very, I've looked at several of the cities who use it, it's very easy to search, um, and print.
What cities use it? Is it small cities, I guess, or is it big cities?
Combination of both. Pretty sure Blue Bridge, which I know they've kind of exploded a little bit. They've blown up, but even before that, they, they were.
How about Honey Grove and Dodge City, if they use?
They are currently peace building theirs together, and they're having their city attorney go over each other. I can't speak for Dodge City, I know that, um, Honey Grove is.
Are there provisions for the enforcement of these ordinances when they're sold out? Are there provisions in the ordinances for?
For all, for all of them?
For the ordinances that?
Not at this point.
But they have to start somewhere.
There is, yeah, I guess, so you gotta, you get a pose, and then you gotta cook it, or something.
Right.
Well. Oh, my God.
When we had time.
What did you say?
Think that that's, this has to change. There is no more due course, these dogs running wild.
That's what we're saying.
But you have to do the laws and the cars. They need to be updated.
Nineteen ninety-five's a long time ago.
But it's still in the, in force.
Correct. But you're probably out of with the state, you're probably out stepping with the state.
Right. That's where, that's where it's probably.
But this is the first step to zoning too, is it not? No?
Not really.
Oh, okay.
Do you just want to assign, go around the table and assign? Section's on a list, or, or we just kind of each look at each section and bring back our areas of concern?
That's up to y'all.
Then at some point, I guess, you're going to have to say, hey, you know, we're going to look at section one, chapter one, or whatever, and maybe want it assigned to somebody, but everybody's going to have a chance to look at it, so. They can kind of say, hey, you know, this is what I've seen, and then others can add to whatever they see.
That's sort of what we would. So, there is fourteen. So.
We just need to look at all of them and bring them up. I'm great, what do you think?
I would, I would, I would shoot that differently, I mean, I would think that this would be a waste of effort, given it's decided, you know, with somebody else, because then, yes, we could say, here are our previous ordinances in the areas that we saw, and things that we caught needed to be checked.
Sure, sure, I need to know what's, if somebody else does, just because they don't, that's going to be a great.
Right. I mean, if we can agree on a way to bring this information back together, maybe just put it in a board document, or like, add a running, or a new section, compares, like, certain, you know, and then bring all that stuff together. If the people have the same section that they have concerns over, put all the things in the same section, and create a separate, like, entire important section.
Give that, like, give that to them first, then you can start to work on it, that way, you can, you can work on it, going back, forth.
You can add no objections, I think, uh, I will, uh, also add myself in here, picking up the ones I've mixed today.
You should get larger sections.
Oh, y'all heard that?
You didn't stutter, you didn't stutter.
Like, which ones would you consider as the largest section?
Actually, your subdivision and some of the ones that are in that hot book that you're largeness by far.
Oh, business mine?
But those are, those are, those are a little newer, so it may not be as bad. These were from ninety, the roundbooks from ninety-five, those were written in two thousand and seven.
We had one, uh, talked to us, uh, uh, one, uh, so, you know, they.
Some former council.
Hopefully, it's not.
Not, it was like, but this one is the, I mean, I was.
I mean, we could just, we could just go around the table and say, one, two, three, four, five, six, and so on.
There's fourteen.
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, there you go.
Well, Greg, I have a book that has twelve in it, so we're going to add.
Well, then, when you add in, if, you add in, no, you add in this white one in front of y'all that has the planning, zoning, and the subdivision of X fourteen. And actually, hold on, timeout, that section, in fact, a little incorrect, actually, because chapter nine, I believe, is, yeah, chapter nine was reserved for subdivision, so actually, there's only thirteen, because chapter nine had already built in, chapter nine tab.
So that's the subdivision section in here?
The second section.
Uh, we need the list of the section to, you know, to say who, who did.
I would, I would, instead of section, I'll do it chap, by chapter.
Yeah.
Uh, this one here.
Chapter one is just your general, general provisions.
So in the white binder, we only have two sections, Tony?
Correct.
Thirty, seventy-seven. This is your title of comments, which is on here, from, question one to the. So when we start, we pay five, six, now we just start, we got chapter one.
Chapter one is your general provision.
Don't take mine, huh?
No.
I'll go with everyone you give me.
So the, the subdivision section is chapter nine, of ordinances, right?
Yes, correct.
Can we, can we just agree to tackle the brown binder first, the section nine subdivision? Is that, yeah, that's a real, I can say.
No, I don't. But, um, if we're going to do, I don't mind starting off with one, I don't mind doing that at all.
So we want chapter two, available control. Chapter three, building and construction. You know, you have a little experience in that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, I think he does.
Chapter four, business and commerce, Russell. I'm just going to sign.
So can I start on one for you?
Yeah, no, we got, we've got Disha in the end, okay, fire protection. Oh, okay, Disha, I know that. Six, for the health and sanitation. It's also breaks law. So we saw that, too, maybe, or does somebody else want to take it?
Yeah, she had it.
Chapter seven, offenses and nuisances.
I guess I'll do that. You want me to do some chapter?
Chapter eight.
No, I, I'll do chapter eight.
All right, offenses and nuisances, who wants it, chapter seven? All right, uh, let's give a mind break, that's subdivision.
No, I think that, that it's part of this, but you know, you can send some of that on chapter nine.
Chapter ten, traffic control. Are we taking off, or we're skipping off?
Traffic control.
Yeah.
It's, it's listed here.
I'm sorry, I was like, is it skip?
It's got the skip nine.
Okay, well, so is that not what nine is?
Yes, it is not.
That is.
Take it, Debbie.
Let's go in and circle, so we lock out the.
That's all right, that's all right.
So is that the one you want? Okay. Nine is Russell's. What's it in? It's in is, traffic, traffic control.
Okay, twelve is planning and zoning, which is also in that module. Somebody want to do that one? Skip that one for now, that would be fairly hard.
What about eleven?
Disha's taking.
And there are, there are several other sections in here, I'm saying, like, population and part.
That's just kind of, that's just information that they gave us prior to, that's kind of their speculation of what.
So this.
Right there, it's, everything of it, that was adopted back in twenty twenty.
Maybe. Excuse me, number twelve.
That's what we're talking about, right? That's designing ordinance, yeah.
So did I, somebody said something like, maybe we should.
Funny, we should do that with planning or zoning. That's my opinion.
What's the subdivision?
That's, that's chapter nine.
Yeah, what's it?
That just tells you the density of subdivisions, how, what they can and can't, like setbacks and.
So does it not go along with plan and zoning?
Yes.
Yes. Those two being.
Yes.
I know what you're saying, but I'm thinking because I'm a few, a little bit. But at the same time. If those two kind of go hand in hand, then. Now we're.
Well, Russell, I don't think it's, I, I got much of it, like, we don't try to.
I'm happy enough to include this one, so it's pretty.
But I mean, at least you've been on the one, done.
No, we don't, no, we don't.
Oh, no?
No, cause I, I forgot that nine and twelve were reserved for those chapters.
Or did you give them? Yeah, you can have.
Okay. Chapter six.
If it's all settled, can you read out who's doing what, please?
Don't have anything left.
We do not. And I wouldn't worry about the appendixes at this point. I mean, they'll tell us what we're doing.
And these are, are you reading that? The general provisions is chapter one, and it's the mayor. Uh, chapter two is animal control, and it's Debbie. Three is building and construction is Greg. Four is chap, uh, chapter four is business and commerce, which is Russell. Five is fire protection. And it's myself, Disha. Uh, chapter six. You're going too fast for.
Five is who?
Me, I'm on fire protection.
Disha.
Uh, chapter six is health and sanitation. It is Russell. Chapter seven is offenses and nuisances. And that's Greg. Chapter eight is personnel and administration, is Patricia. Chapter nine, subdivisions, we're gonna scratch off and go with planning zoning. When we did the planning zoning, we're gonna put subdivisions with that because it kind of goes hand in hand. Chapter ten is traffic control. That's gonna be Debbie. Number eleven, uh, utilities and salt and waste. Uh, is chapter eleven, and that is Disha.
What about Kimmy?
Well, she's not here. She's not, she's taking a little professional job for the summer.
So she doesn't take on anything?
We'll ask her. We'll ask her, but if she's not gonna be here. She's working, uh, eight hours at night.
I'll, I'll cover, I'll cover her parts.
Yeah, if she can make the meeting to be here and we discuss everything, that's great.
So she won't be here all summer for the regular meeting?
No, she's, um, for regular meetings, she is asked to be off for Mondays, yes. Uh, I asked her, she's gonna be here Tuesday, and she said they keep switching on her, but she's gonna try to be here Tuesday of our, uh, town hall meeting.
But not regular city council?
Yes, she'll be here for regular city council.
Yeah, this one was just a time that she can't be here, I guess, because of scheduling or whatever, when she's in traffic.
So number six is, is who?
Russell.
Help?
No, Russell. And number nine is?
Nobody, is, uh, gonna go with planning and zoning.
Nine is where, or the planning and zoning.
The ordinances? Yeah, the ordinances. Yes, but we have a concern that they may or may not be the current.
They may not what?
Be the current person.
We need to be updated.
They are the most current that we have.
They are the most current that we have, they just need to be updated and make sure that they are.
So how long do you think it's gonna take to have another meeting after?
End of the step.
Everyone looks it over and blah, blah, blah.
Well, we can do it next month. We have a menu on the twelve, eleven.
Yeah, and then Russell goes on vacation. I'm taking nine, and I'm retired.
I can help you. I'm already in now.
Oh, he's already in. Cool. And, uh, when can we do it next month?
Do you even discuss it, which you can't?
I know, no, they're talking about when can we come back and discuss.
Can't schedule a meeting.
No, it's Saturday.
Can't Saturday until, you have to do that during the, after the city council meeting so it gets voted on.
Got that?
So it was round vote, or whatever it was, whatever day it is. At that meeting, y'all will find out. It'll be on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Do we have a copy of the current?
Uh, twelve is the.
Town hall.
Yeah, I know. But it's the eighteen.
Budget safety.
Did y'all catch that?
Yep.
No. When is the town hall meeting?
Twelve.
Twelve of July.
Seven o'clock.
Budget is the eighteen.
Okay, of July.
All right.
This sounds like a cartoon, you know, that's all.
That's all.
Adjourn.
Of course, some of them might not be able to remember that.